Let it reflect that the me- uh, the record reflect this meeting was posted as required by the Open Meetings Rec- Open Meetings Record Act. Open Records, anyway. Uh, and so the first thing we have on the agenda is, uh, public comments or agenda topics. Do we have any?
There were no public comments for agenda topics.
Okay, thank you, that's great news. Uh, the next one is the Internal Auditor's Report from Nellie Ledesma.
Excuse me, but my allergies decided to show up for this meeting, too. Thank you, Dr. Powers. I mean, Mr. Powers, Dr. Muriel.
I'm all right, Doctor.
Um, Doctor. I'm sorry.
Well, we are, Doctor.
Yeah, you really are, yes. I don't know why they don't call y'all doctor.
I know, you are.
Doctor Reininger.
I keep telling my daughter-in-law, who's now a PhD, that, you know, she, anyway, she doesn't buy it, so.
Uh, Dr. Neola, Senior Administration. Um, in your binder, you will find an, uh, internal audit quarterly report consisting of the following, of 12 audit reports. And, um, I just wanna, you know, I'm just gonna recap these audit reports. But some of these audit reports, the first six of them that you see in your, in your, uh, binder, uh, were conducted to assist the external auditors, uh, CRI, in the annual financial audit of the school district. And that was presented, uh, at the Policy Audit Committee in November. Um, the external auditors relied on their work performed on these audits, uh, by us, um, in their assessment of the district's internal controls, uh, in these areas. So those audits, um, even though we haven't been presenting, 'cause, um, you know, just different things that have come up, and this is the first time we're presenting the whole year, um, that's why those audits are old, I wouldn't say. So in your, uh, binder, you will see, uh, the first audit was an audit of bid files. And that audit, uh, the purpose was to just test compliance with local, state, and federal procurement requirements in the bid process. The external auditors selected 25 vendors that were paid more than $50,000 to test for bid compliance and required state and local federal procurement requirements for the 21, 22 school year. We audited the supporting documentation for the purchase orders selected to test attributes related to the type of bid. Based on the work performed, our exemptions were noted, and, uh, the district is in compliance with, uh, state, uh, local, and federal procurement requirements. Any questions on this report?
Any questions?
The next report is the year-end physical inventories. And the purpose of this audit was to perform testing procedures on year-end physical inventories as of June 30th, 2022, to provide the district's external auditors with an independent assessment regarding the validity, completeness, accuracy, existence, and reliability of the district's year-ending inventories. Testing procedures were limited to those departments having inventory reported on our financial statements as of 6/30/22, which includes the maintenance, central receiving warehouse, transportation, and child nutrition departments. Internal audit observed staff conducting inventory counts at the campus sites and the areas selected. We reviewed, uh, reconciled final inventory reports to inventory counts observed. We analyzed inventories for all departments for reasonableness, and based on our work performed, there was no exceptions noted. Any questions on this audit?
Uh, no questions, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was just, you know, it just strikes me, the level of detail that you all, um, put into the auditing process and that your teams, um, do in, in, you know, keeping this, like, we're, we're talking about, we're counting dipsticks and bulbs and wiper blades.
We're telling, we're, we're checking gas, and we're checking, yeah, we check all kinds of things all over the district.
It's super impressive.
Uh-huh. And then, like I said, these were just items that are on the financial statements. Uh, you know, throughout the year, we also look at, you know, like band instruments, we can go look at, you know, shop parts, we can go look at other things that the district keeps, you know, that we kind of keep inventories of, so.
Thank you, thank you for the work on that.
Um, the next audit report is the, um, audit of state compliance for program intent coding for payroll dispersments.
What page is that on?
Number three. The purpose of this audit is to test the district's program intent coding of payroll dispersments for compliance with the Foundation School Program Special Program Allotment Eligibility Requirements. The external auditors selected 25 payroll dispersments for teachers and employees to ensure they are classified to their appropriate Special Program Allotment Program Intent Code. We reviewed the detailed supporting documentation for all selected employees. The information included campus rosters, job assignments, master schedules, and Texas education, educator certificates. And we worked hand-in-hand with Ms. Debbie on this audit, when she provided the information. So based on the work performed, there were no exceptions noted, and all the employees were properly coded to the correct program intent code. Any questions on that audit?
No, thank you.
The next audit is the audit of state compliance for program intent coding for non-payroll dispersments. The purpose of this audit was to test the district's, um, program intent coding for non-payroll dispersments, also to ensure compliance with the Foundation School Program Special Program Allotment Eligibility Requirements. The external auditors again selected 25 non-payroll dispersments to ensure they were classified to their appropriate program intent code. We reviewed, uh, the detailed documentation, uh, supporting documentation of respective program director authorizations included with the purchase orders, invoices, and check Based on the work performed, there were no exceptions noted. Any questions on this report? The next report was an audit of HCISD self-funded insurance. The purpose of this audit was to test the district's group health self-funded medical and pharmacy insurance claims for compliance with state and local self-funded insurance requirements. The external auditors selected 68 medical and pharmacy claims to test for compliance with state and local self-funded insurance requirements for the 21, 22 school year. The following attributes were tested for support. Did the claim, was the claim included in the monthly invoice paid by the district, and the amount paid agreed to claim report provided by Blue Access? The employee is properly authorized to be on the plan? We verified the employee's selected plan covered, uh, by the, in the claim? And also based on the work performed, that no exception, uh, and also we just verified just to make sure that what we're paying is exactly what we're being billed for, or what we're being billed for is what we're paying, and also that those employees truly exist, and that they do have the plan coverage that we're paying for. And so, some of these, um, were small, you know, because some of them are pharmacy claims, some of them have, you know, blood work or anything that you can see that was, you know, billed to the district. So there was a, a variety of various amounts, you know, from very high, um, amounts to very small amounts, just to make sure that even the small amounts were also, um, looked at. So based on the work performed, there were no exceptions noted.
That's quite a, that's quite a.
And this one took a long time.
I was gonna say, that takes a lot of time.
Well, because we're having to access other systems, like the Blue Cross Blue Shield system, and we're having to meet with Rachel, Ms. Rachel Cortez was the one that, you know, she has certain accesses that we, um, we're having to sit with her and look at these documents, you know.
You have, what, over 2,000 employees?
Because of the confidentiality, you know.
How many?
327.
3,000?
Almost 3,000.
Wow, that's a, that's a lot of claims that you have to look at.
Yes. Any questions on these? The next report, um, the sixth report that we did for the auditors was the audit, and this one, we just kind of grouped together in this report. Um, in the past, we have separated each one, but, you know, we just grouped them all together, so it could just be one report. The audit of PIMS, Student Classification Eligibility for the Special Ed, LEAP, CATE, CCMR, and Ask, At-Risk Students. The purpose of this audit was to determine student classification eligibility for Special Ed, LEAP, CATE, CCMR, and At-Risk Students to determine state compliance with eligibility requirements for proper classification into PIMS as per CRI's audit criteria. A total of 40 students were randomly chosen to test eligibility. The sample size for the five types of student classifications were 17 Special Ed students, one LEAP student, 10 CATE students, one CCMR, and 10 At-Risk students. We met with the respective directors to gain an understanding, uh, on the student eligibility information, and we reviewed the respective program guidelines and procedures and information required to determine the eligibility and appropriately classified services for students. I'm happy to report that, based on the audit procedures performed on the student folders selected, there were no findings that came to our attention for the attributes we tested. Student folders were organized, and all required documentation was complete, signed, and on file, and no discrepancies were noted. Any questions on this report?
Super, super.
Thank you.
So that was the first six that had to do with the external auditors. The next five reports that you see there are, um, special activity fund audits at five campuses. And these were conducted, and they're required to be conducted as per policy, um, when there is, um, a change in principal or secretary at the campus. And I'm happy to report that, based on all the, uh, five audits, there were no findings noted, and the monthly, uh, financial reports were reviewed and reasonably correct. So the, the five audits were the, um, there were all changes in secretary or bookkeeper, and this was at Harlingen High School South, STEM, Preparatory Academy, Vella Middle School, Dishman Elementary, and Lamar Elementary. And I think, um, a lot of those, I think, I think all of but one are still looking for secretaries, so.
Is, do we have a policy that every school has to be audited within so many months or so many years?
Every year, we, well.
Every year?
We audit them every end of the year.
Every campus.
I, I guess it's not a requirement. Um, I know in the past, you know, it was done, like, you know, um, maybe this year they would audit maybe 10 campuses, next year another. But we like to do all the campuses, just because there's so much monies that go in through the campuses, and this is our way to always check and make sure that we have.
What are the basic forms of the funds that come in? Are they like?
Um, a lot of fundraisers, they have, um, you know, sometimes they have, uh, big fundraisers like cookie sales, cookie dough, um, they're selling jewelry, um, sometimes they have just, um, in their own campus, they sell like snacks after school, pizza, and depending if it's a middle school and a high school, then all the clubs are selling different things. But the elementary levels, they sell different.
So like, if the senior class is trying to raise money for their prom or something like that, that's something you also check into?
Yes, uh-huh. We make sure that, you know, especially if they're selling tickets, and we want to make sure we have, uh, ticket counts, ticket reconciliation, that we can say, okay, you started off with so many, this is how much you ended with, and you were selling it how much, and then we try and reconcile, make sure that all that cash was deposited. Um, and then at the campuses, they also have book fairs, so that's also a big money maker at most of the campuses. And they usually have two a year, so we also make sure that all those monies come in. Uh, a lot of kids paying cash, a lot of times the parents pay with credit cards. Um, but those are the, the bigger ones. And of course, we also have some donations that people make at the campuses, so we also want to make sure, you know, what was that donation for, and is it being used properly the way that they intended it for to be used?
I just had a question on the, um, there was a note, right? And, and I understand the, like, booster organizations are not, are not subject to this, so if, if there's a different process.
So the boosters are separate, because they are independent, they don't use our tax ID, they're not, you know, they're separate from apart. However, they are still under the umbrella of the superintendent, because they only exist to help the campuses, right?
Right.
Or a certain club. So even though they're apart, because they have their own information, their own taxpayer ID, we still have to look at them.
Okay.
Because they are raising monies for the, for that purpose.
They should be following this thing at least, have that.
And so, they should, and so they do have some, um, you know, we give them some templates and some, um, you know, ideas of what they need to be following, some checklists, and then we also tell them they need to be having end-of-year audits, especially right now when they're starting to have new officer elections, so before somebody else resumes positions that they already know where, you know, where they stand, right? Um, and so we do also look at those, um, boosters, you know, we tell the campuses, you know, get their notebooks, uh, their information, so that when we go out there at the end of the year, we can also look at that information. And of course, a lot of times during the year, the principals will call us and say, you know, I have, you know, um, you know, a concern with this booster club, can you please come and look at it, make sure everything's okay? And so, in fact, today we got a call about a couple, so we might be going out to do that this coming week. But yes, so the principals and the, and the administrators at the campus are really, you know, the first, you know, because they're attending those meetings, or they're told to, right? So they, they're kind of the ones who firsthand are seeing what's going on, and, you know, what's going on with the parents, they're the ones who get the phone calls. Sometimes we get them first, you know, um, but a lot of times, you know, they get them first, and then they call us.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
So, um, like I said, there was five special activity fund audits, but everything was good with them.
Super.
And then the last audit is the, um, audit of unannounced cash audits. And this is an audit that we also, um, want to do, or we want, you know, we try to do every year, um, as much time as it takes, and I, I think it's necessary, and so what we do is we just unannounced, we show up at the campus, and we ask them to see their safes, and we ask to see what last deposit they had, and their cash receipt books, and we just want to make sure that no monies are being hoarded in the safe, or left undeposited, or that, um, you know, that everything is also, um, reconciling as far as what they're receipting and what's deposited, um, at the campus. And so the purpose of this audit was to ensure that proper cash management procedures were being followed, and that internal controls were in place to ensure the district funds were adequately safeguarded, as, as, um, outlined in the Student Activity Fund Manual. The unannounced cash audits were conducted from October 19th, 2022, through March 7th, 2023, in which 72% or 26% of the district's campuses and departments were selected. The following attributes were tested: to ensure that the safe is working properly, that monies were secured in the safe and ready for pickup by the armored car services; we reviewed previous deposits to ensure they are being made daily; we reviewed validated bank deposit slips to ensure the deposits were picked up and processed timely; and based on the audit procedures performed, there were no findings noted. And there was a couple of campuses that did have some deposits that were being worked on while we were there, and, uh, one, one campus, um, did have some monies that had just been brought into her, and so we helped her count it, so that it could, it was a lot of money, it was loose change and different things like that. So we also recommend that, you know, if you do get a lot of cash, a lot of change, you know, maybe invest in a little money counter machine, you know, um, so that they can be able to, um, you know, if not, it becomes tedious, and then they're like, oh, I need to go do that, I don't have time, and so you just kind of help them out, that's what we recommend. But other than that, everything turned out good, and, and there were no findings. That concludes my internal audit quarterly report. If there's any questions or any comments?
Well, I'm, I'm curious, when you do like these campus unannounced visits, or I guess to any campus, who is responsible for, at each campus? Is it just one designated person, or is it a, a certain secretary that's designated to maintain these books?
It's the secretary, usually the principal secretary's the one who's the.
Does all that.
Financial secretary, and at the, at the middle schools and, and the high schools is the, like, the bookkeepers, right? Um, but ultimately, the principals are, you know, um, the ones who need to provide that, you know, top oversight and make sure that, that all this is getting done, that the deposits are being made. A lot of times, a lot of principals are the only ones who have access to the safe, so the secretary tells them, you know, I need to go put monies in there, or get monies from in there. So, um, the principal is ultimately responsible, but the secretaries, you know, that duty's delegated to the secretary so that they can do.
Anybody have any questions? Well, Nellie, thank you very much, I mean, there is so much in these reports, I mean, the, the hours and time that you've spent and you're, uh, working on this is incredible.
Well, Nina, too, I mean, we work together as a team.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, 'cause, uh, we know that within these pages is lots of hours and hard, hard work that you do, so thank you so much for all you do, and, and keeping us up and on the up and up, so.
Thank y'all for your support, too.
That's why we get such a good rating every year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next thing on the, uh, agenda is to discuss, uh, recommended revisions to Policy Update 120 and Local Policy FC. Debbie Skoggan.
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon, committee chair, Mr. Powers, committee members, and Dr. Neola, senior team and audience. Policy Update 120 includes policy revisions to state and federal revenue sources, safety program, uh, risk management, emergency plans, student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaint, grievances, and student discipline. Raymond Mendoza will present the first policy update.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Committee member, Dr. Neola, there is a revision to Policy CB Local as it pertains to federal awards. The, the revision states that we shall provide public notice of federal grant applications through an information item at a board meeting and by published information on the district's website. The district shall make available opportunities for public input as required by the law or the granted agency. This change in policy also requires that the superintendent shall approve the grant and award the plans. This process was followed, uh, a couple of years ago, when we, before we were awarded the ESTR funds, so this is, uh, they're incorporating that process into the regular, uh, application process for any federal awards from now on. So this is the process that we have to follow from now on, as far as when we apply for federal awards. Any questions?
Raymond, who, who is responsible to, to put these notices out on our website? Who in the school district does that?
I know for sure our federal programs director has, has to follow those requirements.
Is that person's responsibility to post it?
Yes, we have to follow some, uh, guidelines for federal, uh, funds, those are required to be posted on our, on our website as well. Uh, CATE programs as well, and any other, uh, requirement by state law. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And may I, may I ask one question? So this is really on every application, not on every application awarded for, for federal grants?
For, for federal funds.
So not, we, you know, our, so for example, our grant writer puts out a lot of applications, but this is just for federal funds?
Yeah, federal.
And so that, that's a little bit of a narrower scope. Okay, okay, but anything we apply for federally?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next policy is Policy CKC Local, Safety Program and Risk Management and Emergency Plans. In this policy revision, new recommended text requires a district's multi-hazard emergency plan to include responding to a train derailment near a district school if a district facility is within 1,000 yards of a railroad. This is information that we have already included in our Emergency Operations Plan Annex, and we have identified that we have currently, uh, 19 facilities that are within the 1,000 yards of a railroad. So this is, has been taken care of.
And that really was, has always been on, in our Emergency Operation Plans.
Yeah.
But that, that one has been in those plans for years, uh, they're officially putting it into policy, but that, uh, because of where a lot of our schools are located, we had already accounted for that.
With how many feet, or how many yards from it?
Within 1,000 yards.
1,000 yards.
From the railroad.
Wow, the way the railroads zigzagged through this town, I wonder how many campuses, I know this building.
I think you said, what, 17?
19. We have 19, 19 facilities.
19 campuses that are within 1,000 feet of railroads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Make sure they check their break shoes. All right.
The next policy is Policy FNG Local, Student Rights and Responsibilities, Student Parent Complaints and Grievances. So the revision, revision to fol- of Policy FNG Local can be found at other complaint processes. The recommendations clarify how special education complaints are addressed, encompasses all instructional resources policies, and references the required hearing procedure for eligibility disputes under school nutrition programs. So our current policy, FB Local, indicates that a parent has a right to an impartial hearing if the parent has a concern or complaint about the district's actions regarding the identification, evaluation, or educational placement of a student with a disability. A parent who disagrees with a placement decision or the manifestation determination may request a hearing, and that is something that we already have in place as part of FB Local. Our current policy, FOF Local, states that the district shall provide a hearing process in compliance with the USDA requirements for disputes about a student's eligibility for free or reduced-price meal programs. A parent or student may appeal the decision of the hearing official in accordance with FNG Local, and we currently run under the Community Eligibility Provision, known as CEP, which allows us to provide every student with a free breakfast and lunch. And so this is also information that we currently have in our supporting local policies.
Okay, any questions?
The Dr. Joseph Yarial has the next two policies.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Powers, board members, Dr. Neola. Um, so recommended changes to FO Local are to clarify circumstances when restraint may be used generally, and to more prominently address restraint of a student who receives special education services. If you look at the top of page three of three, you see a deletion of number four, and moves what was formerly five to three. Furthermore, a statement related to students with a disability is moved from the end to the beginning of that section, and that section starts on page two of three.
May I ask a question? So the, so these changes, just a placement essentially, right? There's not, there's not substance, it's just location.
Correct, and yes, correct, it's just moving things around.
Around. Are we driving these changes, or is somebody telling us we need to do this?
Those are recommendations come from TASB, so.
From TASB, correct, okay. Just clarifying. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, uh, next one is recommended changes to FC Local, um, and this is related to when a student moves residence at any time during the school year. So currently, as per policy, when a student moves residence at any time during his or her freshman, sophomore, or junior years, and that residence pertains to another new high school, the student must attend that new high school. We are proposing adjusting that policy to allow a student to remain at their originating high school, even if they move at any time during their freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior year. So, for example, if I'm a sophomore at Harlingen High School, and my parents live in the Harlingen High School zone, and my parents end up buying a house, and we have to move into the South Zone, currently, as per our policy, I would have to attend Harlingen High School South. The re- the recommended change we're making is to allow that student to remain at Harlingen High School, because that's where they start at their high school, instead of having to move to a new campus.
For the rest of his high school career?
Correct.
So they would have the option.
It's an option, not required.
Correct, yes, yeah.
They can either go, or they can stay.
Correct, and that's a recommended, uh, change.
Wow.
Is there any, one more question? Is there any limit on, well, I, now I want to go, now I want to go back, I want to go, you know, each year?
There, it, so if I, if I, you know, let's say this policy is in place, this new policy in place, and so I'm allowed to remain at Harlingen High School, and then I want to move to South, technically, if you're living in the residence, yes, you could eventually end up moving to South, because you live in, in the South Zone.
But what if you decide, okay, now I've moved, and then?
And you want to move back?
Yeah.
No.
You're, you're locked in.
Correct.
Is that clear in the writing?
It's a one, it's a one change.
One.
So if you, if your parents move to the other, other school district, or from Harlingen High to South District, then, uh, if you make that move, you're done, but, but if you stay at Harlingen High School, optional, you can just stay there junior, senior year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And some of that is, is coming from typically, you know, high school is such a, such a an emotional time for kids, and so to have to move from the school where they're at, uh, where they planned to be their whole high school career, 'cause that's what fed from their middle school, and then all of a sudden, because their parent has moved, uh, because they have moved, that child has to make that, that move, and it's one of those that we constantly get requests from, because there's so much mobility in, in the district. Um, and so we have, we have operated on, on that, on that, uh, system of, there's one move. We do it at our middle schools with open enrollments. On our open enrollments, you can't hop from here to there, to there. You have a choice for an open enrollment, and if that's not, if you change your mind, you can only go back to your originating, originating campus. So this kind of follows that same concept of, yes, you can have that one move, but you can't go back and forth, you can go back to your originating campus only, which is the one that they are zoned for.
I, I like this, I think because people form. I like this. I think because people form their friendships, particularly when they're sophomores and juniors, I think that by the junior sophomore year, they're established on that campus and in their clubs and what have you. So I like it. So. Now, is that coming from TASB, or is that our deal?
That's our, that's our recommendation.
Did you think of that, Joseph?
What's that?
Did you think of that?
Well, and to Dr. Niola's, you know, point, and a lot of requests that we get, you know, a lot of those, you know, pertain to these particular situations. And, you know, parents, families are facing tough times right now. And so you do have a lot of mobility from one apartment to another, from one house to another, and they're renting back and forth, trying to find the, you know, the lowest rent. And so unfortunately, it's impacting the students and uprooting the students in certain instances.
And, okay, just one more clarification. So on page 28, four of six, point nine, that's the statement that indicates you're only approved one time, right?
One time.
I just, I think this is a big shift from what we've done in the past, right?
Correct.
And so if we're not really clear about this, I think there could be confusion.
And there's no grandfathering in, like, this starts at like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, when does this start?
Like, when it would, you know?
Well, this is just recommended right now, so, yeah.
Right, but if we were, I think that language has to be clear.
Like, it would start next school year?
Correct, yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, when's the turn-on date?
Correct. Yes, it would, it would begin 23, 24 school year.
Okay. Are these on the agenda for tonight, or?
Yes. If it's, if it's the committee's recommendation, we certainly can continue studying, studying this a little bit further, and we're comfortable with that as well.
Is that it?
That is my-
I think so. I'm just, I'm, anyway, it is a big shift. And so I'm just trying to think of the ways that we may get questioned, or-
So if I may, you know, one of the things that may come to play is the UIL eligibility, right? And that's mainly what comes up. But we're governed by the 365-day rule, okay? So, for example, if a special circumstance arises, and I, you know, move over to Harlingen High School, but I live in the South Zone, I cannot participate in varsity sports for 365 days. If I were to remain at South, I can participate in varsity sports. So that same rule would apply here. So I'm a junior, and my parents move into the South Zone, and I want to remain at Harlingen High School, I'm eligible for varsity athletics because I've established residency for 365 days, okay? But let's say there's a special circumstance where the student has to move to Harlingen High School South, but still lives in the Harlingen High School Zone, they are not eligible for varsity athletics with Harlingen High School South until that 365-day rule, you know, lapses.
Even, even with a special circumstance?
Correct, even with a special circumstance, yes.
What's the example of a special circumstance?
We have, you know, an instance of bullying perhaps that we may have, and a student feels more comfortable somewhere. That's one. You know, sometimes you have death in the families that arise, and, you know, just, the circumstances vary, special circumstances.
I probably am going to recommend, Doc, that we just study a little bit more. We have another policy committee meeting that will happen in the summer. And so that might be another opportunity for us just to study it a little bit more and look into some of those, just those unique situations, because we'll always face something unique. And so I think this may be an opportunity for us to just study those a little bit more. And we still have an opportunity to bring this forward even before the next school year.
I guess what is kind of coming up in my mind is just the, the way we define residence. Like, if I just buy another house in the other, do you see what I mean? Like, if I have a residence-
It's where you spend the night. We define that in policy, what residence means. So they can have, they can own two properties in both, in both zones. But it's where you spend the night, and we send people out there in the evenings to go verify that.
That was resolved several years ago.
Yes.
Primarily due to athletics.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Yeah. We have, we've had families that have a home, and they own property on the other side, and they want to be able to use that property because we do have that whole thing of you own property in the district. However, in policy, we define your residence and where you zone is going to be based on where you spend your nights and where you sleep. And so when we have those kinds of situations, our parental involvement department goes out and does home visits. They actually go into the home. Do I see beds? Do I see clothes? Do I see all of those pieces to establish, to establish where is in fact your residence?
Okay, thank you. That's-
And also, if I may add, so this, it currently exists for seniors, right? So if a student finishes out their junior year and they move, they're allowed to stay at that school for their senior year. This would just be changing that to students' night through 12, other grades, adding freshmen, sophomore, and junior year.
I think one of the things, unless I'm missing it, that I think Belinda's alluding to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Belinda, is that once they make the change, it's final. There's no going back. In other words, if they opt to go, if they opt to stay at one campus because their parents moved over to the South Zone, and then they decide to move to the South Zone later, they can do that, but once they're there-
Correct.
They're there.
There's no jumping around.
No going back. And I'm not sure that's stated in there, but.
And I guess really that applies to our comprehensive high schools. They could go from, I think, this is more of a question, not a statement. But in the scenario, okay, I'm a Cardinal, I, my parents buy a home in Hogs, I can stay a Cardinal, right? Or I can move. But if I stay a Cardinal, then I could still move to Health Professions or ECH.
Yeah, yes, and still-
Right, so it's really only our comprehensive.
And, yes, it's real, yeah, and still, and still remain a Cardinal and participate in Cardinal activities, correct.
Activities, so I can-
Yes.
Okay.
I guess since you've been doing this, right, with the, what you just mentioned, right, for the senior year, I mean, you've kind of seen how it's played out, how this has played out, at least for that grade. It's not like a process you haven't already been experiencing. It's just really been with that one particular grade.
And we hold true to that 365, you know, day rule as well. You know, there's no move, there's no, you know, that's a UIL rule, right? And so there's no going around that rule.
Okay. I mean, I guess, obviously, your choice on whether to hold or, I don't know if other, your other board members may have more questions, too.
Well, yeah, and I think certainly, I mean, this is, this is all healthy discussion, and it brings up points, right? And so I think that there's an opportunity for us because we still have a, another, another policy committee meeting happening this summer that if this is something that after we continue studying, we still, we want to move forward with, then we have time to be able to do that.
Yep.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is our policies currently under discussion. Debbie Scoggins?
Thank you, Mr. Powers. The School Health Advisory Council has been reviewing several topics, including recess, mental health and wellness support, and child nutrition. The School Health Advisory Council will be making policy recommendations concerning the importance of daily recess for students at our next policy and audit committee meeting for the 23, 24 school year consideration for policy adoption. Also being researched is policy for dispensing of opioid antagonist medication and EpiPens. The district would need a standing order in order to dispense these medications and stock them in our medical clinics. We are exploring options to enter into an agreement with a local physician who would sign off on a standing order for these medications. So this is also information that we will bring at our next policy and audit committee meeting and provide an update to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any comments? I think that's our agenda, so anything further? Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph, thank you. And Nellie, thank you, and your staff. All right, if there's nothing further, we stand adjourned.
That's your good reason.
Sorry. All right, welcome to the public hearing. The time is now four fifty-five PM. This meeting has been posted in accordance to the Opens Meeting Act. So at this point in time, we have an acquorum. And item number three, the 2021-2022 Texas Academic Performance Report. Ms. Dahlia Garcia, thank you, Dahlia.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Dr. Neillam, Board of Trustees, Senior Team and Audience. Presented for you today is our annual report of the Texas Academic Performance Report, otherwise known as TAPER. The TAPER provides much of the information that has already been provided in prior years and through board committee meetings and administrative updates. But the TAPER, what that has is student performance across each campus and across each district in the state of Texas. So this public hearing simply formalizes the requirement by chapter thirty-nine point three zero six to publicly publish the report within the district, within the requirement of the timeline. So when we speak about an annual report, the annual report contains a lot of information. You'll see some of the topics there. So today's public hearing will just speak to the topics of a lot of the data items that are contained in the annual report that will be published. Upon this public hearing, within two weeks following this public hearing, we are required to widely publish this report. And typically, we publish it through our websites. So it is already loaded onto our website and published for the community, as well as make available a hard copy in the event community members don't have access to the Internet, come to our campuses or come to our office. We have this big report that contains all the information. So the TAPER report is really extensive. So these are just, again, some of the topics of the data items that are contained in the annual report. So the annual report, essentially, there are two different types. One is the PDF report that really just satisfies the required data points for public hearing. And the other is the online version of the TAPER. So that one has some hyperlinks, and you can maneuver through the pages really easily. The cover page, again, this is twenty-one, twenty-two, and so this is last year's data. And of course, within this TAPER report, there is lag information when we start talking about our graduates and CCMR. But the overview of this TAPER report, this is the cover page, does have our accountability rating for 2022 showing a B, and of course, the eighty-ninth score we have, and then special education determination status of needs assistance. So this is the cover page to one of the reports. Some of the contents included in the district and campus profiles, and keep in mind, the TAPER report is available for each campus individually, and it's posted on their website, as well as a district-level TAPER report. So these are just, again, some of the information available within the TAPER. Again, it speaks to the star performance for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, growth, bilingual information, has graduation information, CCMR, and other post-secondary indicators. Additionally, again, extensive information in this TAPER report and in the annual report that we compiled together. Has some very valuable student information, drilling down to demographics, ethnicity, retention rates. With regards to staff information, again, this is all PMS information submitted to the state. We do have information on staff with demographics, salary information, degrees, turnover rates, and in the area of programs with the number of students enrolled in special programs. This is just a little quick glimpse of some of the data we pulled from the TAPER. It has just some of our highlighted economically disadvantaged, our emergent bilingual students, our at-risk population. The neat thing about TAPER is that it includes our district percent alongside the region one percent and the state percent, so we can see how we fare against the region and the state in some of these areas.
Dahlia, can you go back to that last slide? The economically disadvantaged, have we gone up or down in the last five years?
Generally, we've been pretty consistent. So the seventy-seven percent from the prior year, I believe we were at about seventy-nine percent. That was during COVID and the collection of a lot of the CEP information from students. But generally, we're plus or minus one or two percent.
What were we before COVID, do you know, like?
It was around seventy-seven percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, always in that area, seventy-seven, seventy-nine percent.
Thank you.
Also included in the annual report is information on our financial actual data. So in there, again, you'll see revenues, expenditures, disbursements, tax rates, and fund balance information. And then keeping in mind the several awards that our first rating has provided our district with our business office, twenty years in a row, superior rating for an A. So congratulations to a business office on maintaining that financial integrity with our finances. You'll also see some information in the annual report on accreditation status. And with regards to accreditation status, the agency award accreditation status to public schools and charters in the state of Texas on two main ratings, which is the academic accountability rating and the financial rating from the first district or charter must be accredited by the state to operate as a public school. You'll see there, 2022 accreditation status was not issued for all the districts in the state of Texas. The commissioner, if you note down below, we did put a little statement there. The commissioner did recognize the ongoing impact of COVID-19 and decided not to issue any accreditation status until 2022, 2023 school year. But you'll see our first rating there is superior and our accountability rating as well. So we should anticipate seeing this on the following year, having that accreditation status. Additionally, there is an item, table of contents there for violent or criminal incidences. Again, state statute does require that school districts publish their counts at each campus with their number of offenses and their campus incident rate. You'll see the offenses there, it's small, but it's a little chart there on the incident codes that we do monitor. In HCSD, we did put a little asterisk there to mask small numbers confidentiality for FERPA. But you'll see there, our district enrollment was seventeen thousand twenty-two, and our campus incident rate for that one campus that's noted there is a zero point zero one percent for the entire district. This is a decrease from the prior year. But again, small numbers, less than five are masked for FERPA. Some really neat information that's also recorded in the annual report is information on our students when they graduate from high school and enter into the post-secondary institution. So we do have some information here and in the binder as well regarding the location of our students once they graduate and enroll in post-secondary institutions in the state of Texas. So this is, you'll see some student counts there. I know it's a little blurry, but we do have those reports available online. You'll see we had a thousand two hundred fifty-six high school graduates, and then their locations there with UTRGV being at the top of the list with one hundred ninety-five students enrolled there, and then so forth, Texas State Technical College, UTSA, and so forth. This next slide just simply breaks it down by high schools. So we have that available as well in the annual report. You saw the district slide earlier, and this, again, specifically for each high school just breaks it down further, so.
Could you go back to the slide before, please? So we have, of the graduating seniors for 2021, there was a total of both high school or all the high schools of twelve, one thousand two hundred fifty-six?
Yes, sir.
Total graduates? So you were able to track about half, right?
Correct. You'll see some numbers down there that say, like, not trackable, fifty-six.
Right.
Those students are students that enroll in our school district or enroll in public school districts that do not have a social security number, because that's the way we tie it, the state ties enrollment in post-secondary institutions on having that identifiable number.
And what's the not found, exactly?
Not found are either students that didn't enroll in the state of Texas in the post-secondary institutions, or their numbers did not match what the state has.
Did we take into consideration any of them that went to trade schools?
Not in this particular report. This one is provided by the Texas Higher Education Report, so they gather the data, and they link the students and provide the reports.
I know it's very hard to track a lot of these kids, and I'm amazed that you got fifty percent, I really am. But, and of course, you can't follow up, it's hard to follow up on how many of them finish. These are kids that are all starting, but we don't know whether they're going to make two years, three years, or all four, right?
We do have a separate report that we do subscribe to and work with. In fact, a lot of districts do work with the National Student Clearinghouse that does provide information and tries to connect students, our graduates within the state of Texas and outside the state of Texas. Again, that's only if those universities participate in sending their enrollment information to Student Clearinghouse so they can link the data together. So we do have some data available from students graduating within the six years or graduating within four years and their persistence. So we do have that available, but again, going back to your comment, it is very difficult to tie some of the data with students, you know, going to various trade schools or various universities across the state, across the nation, who necessarily don't participate with that Student Clearinghouse company.
Thank you.
And then we're coming to the close of our, of some of the contents located in the annual report. This other one, again, very interesting report shows how our graduates fared in Texas Public School, I mean, I'm sorry, in the post-secondary institution and their grade point averages. So you'll see our four different schools there, and then broken down by four, and two-year colleges, and their GPA and ranking. So we have those reports available in this binder and in the annual report, not just for ours, but for all the other high schools and districts across the state of Texas are located in our report. And then one of the last items included in our annual report is the progress of our district towards meeting the House Bill III goals, particularly in two areas. It is in the area of early childhood literacy and mathematics proficiency on how our students are, students are doing in those particular grade levels, and then the college career military readiness. And the goals, are they achieving the goals they set forth within the next five years? So that report is also summarized in the annual report. So accessing the TAPER report, again, today simply formalizes publicly disseminating the report within the district. You can find a lot of the contents of the report. Again, it's publicly available. You can find it on the TEA website. We also did post it already. I know we have two weeks from today's public hearing to post, but we did post all the documents already on our HCSD website. And then as well, again, to accommodate members of the public without Internet access, we have these binders that we'll be distributing, starting tomorrow, to every campus and departments in the district. Since there's a lot of extensive information, a lot of acronyms in the report, we also did append a TAPER glossary that defines a lot of the information in here, both English and in Spanish. And that concludes just the publication of the contents of what's included in the annual report for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Any questions? Great information. There's no other questions, this meeting is adjourned.
At this point in time, I'd like to bring this regular school board meeting. And the time is now 5:33. This meeting has been posted in accordance to the Opens Meeting Act. And we'll start with one A. We do have a quorum. Going on to one B. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Now on to item number one C, the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Brianna Vela Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board members, Dr. Noella, administration and audience. Tonight's pledge will be led by Dominic Ortega, fifth grade student at Long Elementary. Dominic has been a Long Ranger ever since he was in kindergarten and has received numerous Principal's Pride Awards and participates in the campus chess team. He is Student Council Treasurer and a great role model to his fellow students. Dominic will be attending Memorial Middle School next year and continue his passion for tennis. For college, he wants to attend Texas A&amp;M University. His dream job is to become a professional tennis player, just like his favorite, Novak Djokovic. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome Dominic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you, Dominic. That was awesome. Great job. On to item number two A, recognition of district and regional Battle of the Books winners. Ms. Dr. Veronica Cortan.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board members, Dr. Noella, administration and audience. We are here this evening to celebrate our Battle of the Books winners. Very exciting. So I'll tell you a little bit about Battle of the Books. It is a high stakes game, a high stakes competition that they play for students that love reading. And so our students that we're going to recognize this evening are actually our district champions that moved on to the regional meet here locally. Very proud to tell you that these students did exceptional with their Battle of the Books competition. And so just to let you know a little bit about what that looks like, they read four pretty healthy books, chapter books. And then they have about between 60 and 80 questions that they ask our students as part of their competition. And they have to recall all of the details from their books. So you can see that as a young teenager or an elementary student, that's a lot easier than a 50-year-old adult, right? You don't have to recollect all of those details. But anyway, so we are here this evening to recognize them. We're excited to be able to recognize our district champions at the elementary, the middle and the high school. And so without further ado, I would love for Dr. Noella and Dr. Muniz to join us down here so we can start our recognition. While you're making your way down here, I want to recognize two very special individuals that made Battle of the Books happen this year. That's our Instructional Technology Specialist, Mrs. Monica Alvarado, and also our lead librarian for secondary, Mrs. Ally Cornejo. So let's get right down to our recognition of our elementary students. Our elementary students, this campus won first place for our district, and that is Lee Means Fine Arts Academy. We'll begin with recognizing Madeline Gonzalez. Come on up, Madeline. Parents, if you're in the audience, no need to wonder if you can take a picture. The answer is yes. Next, we have Marisa Molina. Our coach from Lee Means Elementary. There's our proud principal I was looking for. And our coach at Lee Means Elementary is Mrs. Selma Ramirez. As we get ready to welcome up STEM Squared Prep, I'd also like to mention that Lee Means placed second at the regional competition. So huge congratulations to you. Next, we move on to recognize our STEM Squared Preparatory Academy team. Team members include Cassandra Banda, And leading this team as their coach, oh, I'm sorry, Grace McCormick. And leading this team as their coach, oh, I'm sorry, Grace McCormick. And now we recognize their coach, Mrs. Johnson. While we get ready to welcome our Harlingen School of Health Professions, I'd like to recognize STEM Squared Prep for placing third at their regional competition. So next, we move on to our School of Health Professions. This is our high school district champion. I don't think I see her, but we're going to start with Natalia Cavazos. Is she with us this evening? We'll give her a round of applause anyway. and their fearless coach, Mrs. Ally Cornejo. And this team placed fourth at the regional competition. Huge accomplishments here. So now I'm going to ask that the rest of the board come down to join us for a quick If we have our campus principals, we'd love to have you join us for the photo, so come Now, students, after he snaps a photo, you're all going to stand and just smile, 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 because you have a whole paparazzi waiting for you already. Enjoy.
Thank you, Dr. Cortan. On to item number 2B, recognition of Vella's Jazz Band for selection as the Medal of Distinction, Maestro Award National Winner and Jazz Education Network National Convention Selection, Carla Hofflinger. Kara, sorry. Apologize. I'm sorry. I'm putting stuff in there.
Mr. President, Board Members, Dr. Noella, Administration, and Audience, it is my pleasure to be able to present these exceptional students and exceptional directors to you today for not just one national award, but three. We are so exceptionally proud of these students, and as you can see, they're here. We'll have a picture in just a moment, but we want to just explain each of these different awards. One of the awards they received is the Maestro Award National Youth Ensemble presented to our director, Ms. Erica Udi Bay. The Medal of Distinction is through the Gifts Foundation, through Perform America. They submit a recording and are chosen out of many, many ensembles. They also received a separate national award from the Foundation of Music Education, the Mark of Excellence National Winner Award, where 38 states submit, again, in the youth jazz category. And lastly, we want to recognize them for their jazz education selection as the National Middle School Ensemble, where they went to Orlando, Florida this past January and performed for jazz educators from across the country, professors, college professors, and just enthusiasts, and did a wonderful, inspired performance. None of this would be possible without the exceptional leadership of Ms. Erica Udi Bay. You know, this ensemble has had prolonged success, and starting, I think, in TME it was in 2018. And these are all different students that were in part of that ensemble, and that's only achieved through the dedication and love that is given by a teacher, and that is Ms. Erica Udi Bay and her staff. It also is not accomplished without the incredible support of administration, and it's also not created without the incredible support and funding and time and schlepping from the parents. So, parents, if you are here, would you stand and be recognized? It's just incredible what these students have been able to achieve in their musical journey in just a short amount of time. So at this time, I would like to invite our directors, Ms. Erica Udi Bay, Mr. Desi Lamont, Philip De La Fuente, to come on up, and also the Vella Jazz Band to come on up and board. If you would come down for a photo, we have our awards that we'll be also including in our photo.
Gentlemen, five, six, and shorter. Hey, guys, five, six, five, six. Take a step and follow me. Five, six.
Here, how about starting from y'all right here? Y'all can go on this side, so follow me. Y'all follow me this way.
Here, how about starting from y'all right here? Y'all can go on this side, so follow me. Y'all follow me this way.
You're good. You think I see you? You're good.
Erica, right here.
Everybody look right here. I can see everybody's faces. Okay, here we go. Ready, one, two, and three. All right, one more time. One, two, and three.
Double time, guys.
Everybody.
One, two, and three. Got it. All right.
Oh, I know. They won everything else. It would've been awesome to hear them. At this point in time, we'll continue with 2D, 2C, recognition of state qualifiers for diving, powerlifting, and wrestling. Coach Robert Davies.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Noella, Board Members, and Audience. Tonight, we are pleased to honor student athletes that have advanced to the state level in their respective sports. We will begin with diving. Dr. Noella and Dr. Muniz, if you would like to join us down front for the presentations. Joining me in the presentations will be Mrs. Sandra Flynn and Mr. Luis Solorio.
Good evening. Love getting to come back here every spring and present our awesome student athletes to you that have qualified for the state tournament. And this year, we have Jacob Griffin Vincent. Jacob, if you'd like to come up. Jacob is a senior. Jacob is a senior. He'll be attending Oklahoma Christian University next year. It's also important to note that this was his first full year of diving. So with just one year of diving under his belt, he qualified for the state meet, number 20 in the state, which is pretty impressive of all the divers in the state, coached by Ivan Moran, and our head swimming coach is Coach Oreski. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
All right, here we go. Ready, one, two, and three.
It's an honor for me to stand up here tonight and introduce to you all our state qualifier in wrestling. For those of you that are very aware, it's our first year in wrestling, and wrestling is a very technical sport. It's not a sport where you can drive around in parks and see little leagues in wrestling, so it's very difficult to have success very quickly. So the achievement by this young man is incredible, to say the least. So without further ado, I would like to present to you our first-ever state qualifier in wrestling from Harlingen High School, Ramsey Memmich, coached by his head coach, Ray De Leon, and I will tell you something about Ramsey.
We will conclude tonight's presentation of our state qualifiers with our powerlifting teams. First, the Harlingen South Powerlifting Team, Mackenzie Temes, and Reno Villanueva. The team is coached by Marco Zuniga and Marco Garcia. And now for the Harlingen High Powerlifting Team. They traveled to state, the girls placed fifth overall in the competition. The team was led by state qualifiers Allison Campos. The team was led by state qualifiers Allison Campos. Juliana Valdez. State runner-up and silver medalist Ashley Cruz. And state champion and gold medalist Raquel Yvei. This is back-to-back. Last year, we had our very first female state champion powerlifter, and this year, this is our second. The Cardinal Powerlifting Team is coached by Nathan Aguilar and Mondo Gonzalez. I'd like to invite our board members, coaches, and building principals down front for a group photo.
What's up, you guys, hold on?
It's all the getaway.
What are we doing like this?
Power.
Ready, one, two, and three.
Got it.
I just want to say really quick, congratulations to all of you guys. I know it takes a lot of time, especially the wrestling program, it being in its first year. And, you know, just the dedication that you guys put into your respective sports means a lot to us because, you know, we always see the team sports, and they get a lot of the recognition in the media, and you have Friday Night Lights, but even our coaches here who coach other sports, and to put in the time to dedicate, to make sure that you are successful as student athletes. Thank you, coaches, and thank you, student athletes, and thank you, families. And with that said, I'm also going to take the liberty real quick to recognize my first grade teacher, Ms. Rhonda Smith Crowe, who's here back there. Her granddaughter was recognized earlier, so it's not often we get to see as trustees, so... That was a treat for me to walk into this building and see her here, but again, to the student athletes, congratulations, and we're very proud of you.
Say more.
Any other comments? You know, I'll say this real quick, guys, congratulations to the diving team. You know, everybody, fantastic job. I love seeing this, you know, we hadn't, we didn't see this last, we saw a couple last year. We saw, how many the year before? The year before? Is it getting bigger and more? Are we getting more and more, right? And so what I love to see is, and talk about is, the Roger Bannister effect, right? If you guys are not familiar with Roger Bannister, go look him up. He was the first person to break the four-minute mile. And up until that point, they thought, hey, can't do it. It's not possible for a person to run a four-minute mile. But as soon as he broke that four-minute mile, man, that same year, it happened over and over and over, because it was all, it was all mental, right? It was this mental barrier. And so I love seeing all these awards, from diving to wrestling to powerlifting, because we're breaking barriers here at this level. So congratulations to you, congratulations to your parents, congratulations to our coaches, because I know you guys, coaches above and beyond, you see the potential, that's why you're called a coach. Thank you, guys.
At this point in time, we're going to go on to item number two D. Recognition of PTSA Students of the Month for March, Ms. Brianna Vela Garcia.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Noella, administration, and audience. This evening, I will be recognizing our March PTSA Students of the Month. These students represent the schools of Harlingen High School, Harlingen High School South, Harlingen Collegiate High, and Harlingen School of Health Professions. We hope you enjoy this video made by our Media Arts and Communications Academy.
I am a varsity cheerleader, I'm a member of Student Council, PTSA, Lower Valley Cattiling Club, and I'm host of student representative. I have an interest in going into the medical field. I am currently in the CMA practicum here at Harlingen High School, so I will graduate as a medical assistant. Ever since I was little, I always knew I wanted to pursue a career in the medical field. I've always looked up to like my doctors, or my parents are great role models. The medical field helps people in a great way. So I'm currently undecided on the university I will be attending, but I narrow my options down to either Texas State, UTSA, or Shiner University. I plan on pursuing a career in the medical field, and I plan on studying a bachelor's degree in science and nursing, which is a BSN. I want to thank my parents, of course, and I also want to thank all my teachers, and especially my CMA teacher, Ms. Posada. She is a good role model, she teaches us really well, and she is helping me pursue my career in the medical field.
I'm part of the Harlingen High School Swim Team, Swim and Diving and Water polo Team, and I'm part of PTSA. I'm the team captain of Swimming and Water polo team captain. I plan to attend McMurray University in Havoline, Texas, and I plan to study Interpol Disciplinary Studies, and I want to become a coach and a history teacher. I'm just the lover of the sport, for Swimming, I just really want to coach it. Really, just most of my teachers, they've been a lot of help. I can't really pick one, but all of them have been a huge help in basically every day trying to turn work in.
I am a member of Student Council, PTSA, 4H, and FFA, and I'm also in the Dental Assistance Program at Harlingen High School. I am passionate about helping others and making others feel good about themselves, which is why I chose the dental field. I plan on attending Texas Tech University in the fall and majoring in pre-dental, and hopefully later become a dentist. I would like to thank my parents for always encouraging me and letting me know that I can do anything I set my mind to.
I'm the Student Council Vice President, a four-year Southern Star veteran, a member of the varsity soccer team, and the varsity captain of the powerlifting team. Something I'm passionate about is my powerlifting journey. This will be my third year in powerlifting, and I'm excited to be going to state my senior year to compete. I plan on attending Texas State University and studying business, and after college, I plan on attending Champion School of Real Estate to earn my real estate agent license. Some people I'd like to thank for my educational journey here at HIST are my coaches for always pushing me to be the best student athlete on the field and in the classroom.
Any club that I'm in, I'm just a member. I'm part of the Rockets Club and of Student Council. I needed it for college applications, just so that it could look good on my resume. I like playing games and going to the gym whenever I can, or hanging out with friends. I plan to go to UTRGV, and then from there, I'm going to major in Biology, and I'm planning to be a dentist, or just go into the dental field. A friend of a friend's, he's a dentist, and since I was little, I would go with him, and I kind of just got curious. But I like to thank my mom, I like to thank my dad, and any family member, really, my cousins, my dogs, and my friends, of course. They really helped me.
So I'm in NHS, I hold the position of secretary. Student Council, I'm a member, I'm class secretary as well, and that's it. I like to read, spend time with my family, bake, I've been doing a lot of baking. My college is going to be UTRGV. I plan on studying psychology with a minor in business, and I can see myself in a career as a therapist. Why I want to become a therapist is because psychology has always been an interest of mine, and I've read about it my whole life, and I've always been interested in how the mind works and why people feel certain things. And I've always been like the therapist fan, or like the advice giver, so I thought I could lean into that professionally, and I think it would make me very happy, so. My parents, my aunt, my grandma, my sister, and also myself.
My name is Jasmine Marukin, I'm in 12th grade, and I go to the school, Harlingen School of Health Professions. I participated in book club, Spanish club, and library ambassador, and also, I'm in the CMA program. I'm passionate about helping others in the healthcare, and also cooking and cleaning and taking care of my family. I plan on going to the school of UTRGV, and I'm going to stay there for four years and get my degree in health science and do pre-med, and I will also be going out of state for the rest of my medical schooling. I'd like to thank my teachers that helped me, and also my family really pushing me and supporting me doing healthcare.
My name is Kevin Moreno, I'm a senior here at Harlingen School of Health Professions. I'm an ambassador for the local nonprofit organization known as Tobacco Prevention and Control Coalition. I was also an ambassador for the state nonprofit organization known as Students, Adults, and Youth Working Hard Against Tobacco. I'm currently the president of the National Honor Society Chapter here at Harlingen School of Health Professions. I'm also the president of the Hope Squad Chapter here at Harlingen School of Health Professions, and I recently joined Book Club and Yearbook Club. I'm definitely passionate about tobacco prevention, as well as mental health and anything medical-related. At the current moment, I'm in the process of choosing between UTRGV, UTSA, and I find out late March if I'm going to Columbia University. I plan on majoring in biochemistry, and I plan on becoming a cardiothoracic surgeon in the future. There's way too many people to thank, but specifically the teachers. Above all, I'd like to thank Ms. Diaz, she's the teacher that has impacted my life the most.
I know we have many proud family members in the audience tonight, I saw them recording with their phones, so if you're a family member of a student of the month, can you stand up to be recognized? Thank you, this video will be on our YouTube page very soon. We'd like to thank the Harlingen City Council PTA for celebrating our Students of the Month with us, and on behalf of the organization, I'd like to welcome Samantha Ortega to the front, Dr. Muniz and Dr. Noella, may you also come to the front for photos with our students. From Harlingen High School, we have Christopher Camtu. From Harlingen High School, Brianna Flores. From Harlingen High School South, Amy Sauceda. From Harlingen High School South, Anali Ortiz. From Harlingen Collegiate High School, Mario Gonzalez. From Harlingen Collegiate High School, Stacy Martinez. From Harlingen School of Health Professions, Kevin Moreno. From Harlingen School of Health Professions, Jasmine Marukin. I'd like to invite our board to come down for a group photo.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Onto item number three, principals report. You want to say something, anybody? Any comments?
I do, thank you, Mr. President. I do want to just say what a great group of students. I just, the, your thoughtfulness and just your personalities came through on those videos and I'm just so, we love, I don't know if you know this, how much we love getting to know you through these videos and celebrate your accomplishments. So it's such an honor for us to have you here. Parents, you know, family, we're so proud of your students. Thank you for taking time to raise them right and have them being celebrated and so just keep up the great work. We can't wait to see what you accomplish in your future too. Congratulations.
I'm going to echo the comments of Dr. Reiniger and just extend a congratulations saying, I love to watch the videos, love to hear the stories, and I love to hear the thank yous, the thank yous especially to the teachers and to the families, so just another thank you to you all as well. And just super, super excited, this is like one of already in the spring semester, right? Nine weeks left that we've got, so congratulations to all of you. I can't wait to see what you all go off and do after you graduate. Super excited. Congratulations.
Great job. At this point in time, we're going to move on to item number three, principals' report. Bobby Hushen, principal of Long Elementary. And before you start, it looks like you brought your power team. Yeah, awesome. Can you guys stand real quick?
Super proud. Let's give them a round of applause.
Yes, absolutely. Good job. We love it when you bring your team.
Yes, very happy, very happy, thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Noella, members of the board, senior team, and guests tonight. I am very excited to be here tonight. Let me double click here. I have my technical team behind me as well.
Kind of being temperamental tonight.
Okay, here we go. Again, thank you for having me this evening. It is my pleasure to report to you this evening. Inspire for a lifetime of success. This is our beliefs, our motivation, and our purpose here at HCISD. This year, all HCISD elementary schools embarked on capturing kids' hearts. Tonight, I will speak about our new initiative in our district, the why, the what, and the how. I'd like to begin with the why. In 2019 and 2020, the school year changed everything for all of us. HCISD quickly reacted. They transformed our in-school learning to a virtual platform for education. We all thought that we would be back by the fall, and then we realized we entered another school year because of the pandemic. We adapted again to in-person and remote learning, and by the year 21, 22, most students had returned to school. That was the year we started to notice all the academic gaps. We had a lot of issues with learning because children had lost ground. But something else became very clear. We found out that due to a lot of the social distancing, the lack of contact, the children not connecting, and staff too, we realized that it did have a huge impact on the well-being of all of us. Our students and staff needed support more than ever with their social, emotional well-being. We had to ask ourselves, so what can we do to support our students and our staff? The what, the what? Through many studies that were provided, we saw that post-pandemic, there was a lot of concern out there. So one study that I saw also stated this, schools provide safe, stable settings with the sort of clear, predictable routines that children need to feel secure. That is something we already know, but more than ever, we know that this is what they needed to get back in school, to be with their friends, to be with their teachers, and have that connection. HCISD has always been a very proactive and visionary district. The well-being of all has always been their priority. Under the leadership of Sylvia Gumboa, our director of guidance and counseling, along with educators and parents and district leaders and students, a committee was set out to research and find the right approach to develop and grow our staff and students. A disciplinary program was not what they were looking for. Instead, they wanted a way for all stakeholders to connect and build their relationships so they could inspire, engage, and empower our HCISD family. A true process for supporting students to learn, to feel safe, and build trust. A place for staff to celebrate, encourage, and collaborate with each other. So as we look at our new strategic plan rolled out recently by Dr. Noella and the team, we can honestly say that the strategic plan speaks directly to this need. Goal two, hashtag beyond the classroom. 2.2, build skills and opportunities to nurture positive interpersonal connections. 2.3, provide a safe school facilities that foster positive cultures and a sense of belonging. 2.4, redesign systems to ensure student well-being. Goal three, hashtag HCISD heart employee. 3.4, redesign systems of support to ensure employee well-being. After being awarded $800,000, it was a grant through Valley Baptist Health Legacy Foundation, HCISD brought in Capturing Kids' Hearts. This is not really a program, it's a process. It's a process for social, emotional well-being of staffs, of our staff and students. All elementary schools went through this training. We spent two full days together in a very transformational, emotional, professional development. This process was more recently provided to 200 paraprofessionals as well. The how. When we listen to Flip Flippin, who is the founder of Capturing Kids' Hearts, this is what he has to say. A social, emotional learning process that helps people develop productive behaviors, build and maintain positive relationships, and set and achieve goals. Capturing Kids' Hearts empowers the teacher to create that, excuse me, that safe learning environment by growing. We're helping them grow with social, emotional, learning, and teaching capacity. Capturing Kids' Hearts training was one of the most powerful and empowering experiences for all of us, and I mean all of us across the district, not just Long Elementary. It was profoundly moving and inspiring. This is a process that will take probably three years to maybe five to fully develop and implement, but it is a process that is grounded in developing the leadership in all of us. When we look at our leadership for the district, we see our circle and we know that we have to have heart for the people and commitment to excellence. Well, Capturing Kids' Hearts has a leadership triangle, and we want to reach that Excel level. In order to reach that level, what they believe and what they have taught us as we are going through this journey is that we have to be able to have the ability to affirm and encourage others, the ability to grow others, self-control, social skills, self-motivation, and optimism, the ability to demonstrate genuine care. Just look at the left of our circle. We are exactly in that same mindset. That's what the expectation is in HCISD, and that's what we strive to do, to build those relationships, collaborate, be that communicator, and develop ourself and others. I want to talk to you a little bit about the Excel model. This is what we were trained to learn and to develop amongst ourselves first as teachers in our district. The Excel model is about engage, explore, communicate, empower, and launch. All great leaders do this. What you want to do is first, make sure that you're meeting and greeting. You want to get to know. That beginning of the day for children has got to be powerful, and this is something that we brought to Long, and I've seen it across the district, but this is just the very moment that they're coming to our school. And then when they get to the classroom, it's all about how we're engaging with them from the moment they enter our doors. Explore is just about discover the individual's needs and interests. This is Mr. Gonzalez. He's been a leader in our campus and he just, every opportunity he gets, he wants us to collaborate, he wants to find out more interests that we have. He's always finding activities to get, so we can get to know each other beyond that classroom and grow and become more collaborative as we work together. Communicate that you care. Make your message relevant. That's part of the model. And we communicate in many different ways, but one way that Long Elementary has been thriving is through affirmations. We created our very own affirmation boxes, and you can see there's one there with the long mustache. Yeah, he was quite creative in his design, but we give each other affirmations for doing great work, and that's how we're building ourselves so that we can turn around and have our children do the same. We want to make sure that our students know that we care about them. And when you look at our teachers, they do beyond the classroom. Right here, you see them attending a basketball game. They'll attend different events. That's how you communicate your message is relevant, that you can be trusted, this is where you should be, and this is where we love you every single day. Our staff continues to grow and to build our relationships so that we can do that with our children. Empower. Your teaching becomes their doing. As we grow together, we transfer those skills to our children so they can become better communicators and collaborate themselves. Launch is the way you want to end and send, basically the end of the day. We want our children to know that they are loved, we want them to know that they've learned a great lesson that day, and we want them to realize that they can be the change in the world that we wish for them to be. But we also want to make sure that we kind of circle back and let me just explain a little bit about, the model itself is Excel, but we also have to talk about, well, how do we get children to have that buy-in? Where do they get that empowerment from? The social contract is an agreement that they make themselves, and then they soon learn to realize that they are a self-managing group. When they become self-managers, we follow a disciplined process with Capturing Kids' Hearts, and it's very simple. It's four questions. What are you doing? What are you supposed to be doing? Are you doing it? What are you going to do about it? Those four questions, we practiced, we did scenarios, we learned so much just from these four questions. We learned that children need to be reflective. We learned that we can show children how to be reflective if we use these same four questions when we're having to work with children who maybe are off task and not following the rules as they should be. We also learned that there's class signals that can be used. So if you need a moment and if you're ever at a meeting and you need to get their attention, you simply do this, and this is what we're practicing. It's timeout, and yes, I always do this to the children, they're like, no, Ms. Hushen, it's this way. So this is our timeout and we're working on that, and you'll see that across the district, not just at Long Elementary. Children will also do this, and this is basically a check-in. You want to help your classmates in a friendly, friendly manner so that if they're off task a little, you're just checking in, so you're doing this. But this is the most interesting part, the last one, number three, and there's a foul. This is going to take some time because all of this is guided with our children at this moment, but basically if there is a student and you see that there's a foul, another child perhaps hurting some, another child's feelings, you can call that out on them. And instead of having a drawn-out conversation, the children actually self-manage that behavior. And if I'm the one doing the harm, what we expect from that person is, or that child, is to give two put-ups, which is really two affirmations. You come back and you teach the children that, okay, you did something wrong, but you can make it better right here, right now. And then there's also a unique way for administrators to follow in that same framework when they come to us. And I can tell you that I've used a lot of this already, and it has been very eye-opening when I hear the children be able to articulate what they did and what they're going to do different. So the process, as I said, is it's really the Excel model, looking at their social contract, working through these questions, having those conversations. But as you can see, it's a process, and we're developing this process every day around the district. We also have some support that I think it's important, just to let you know, we have process champions on every campus, and their role is to help others on campus so we can continue to develop our process skills. And we have principals that meet in a cohort every month, and we're also having visits, actually this week, visits from Capturing Kids' Heart, they're coming in and they're doing a traction visit to help us get, see where we are and where we could learn and set some new goals. So that in a nutshell is pretty much Capturing Kids' Hearts, and I'd like to kind of share with you that Long Elementary has a motto and it's been in place for a few years that was voted upon our team, "All in, all heart, and all year." The journey that we are on has enabled us to work towards building relationships and making connections with each other, our students, our families, our district leaders, and our community members. It takes all of us to capture a kid's heart. So I hope you will join me now as we share with you a video that was presented, that's going to be presented, and some of our staff is here tonight, and I can't speak enough how proud I am of them, and I just, I love them all and I appreciate that they're here. So with no further ado, I'm going to go ahead and start our video.
Well, I've been working here at Long Elementary for 18 years. I started off as a paraprofessional for 13, and I'm a teacher for five years. I've always enjoyed working here. This is my home away from home. The staff is great, the admin is wonderful, and the kids are just a joy to have. Working with the kids is something that I enjoy because I see the growth of these kids as they go from first grade all the way through fifth grade, and I see them finish fifth grade, and I see how awesome that they've become. Well, we started the Capturing Kids' Heart program here at our school district a few months ago, so we've been slowly rolling it out to our students, and it's been very effective. We've been working with how to greet our students at the beginning of the school day, how to let them go home with a great greeting as well, something that they're looking forward to when they come to our classrooms.
First thing in the morning, what I do is I stand outside my classroom door, and you greet the children as they're walking in, and you look at them, and you look at them right in their eyes, and you greet them by their names, and they will have the biggest smile when you do that. So the engagement really sets the tone for the day, and I have noticed, I mean, in all the years that I've been teaching, that one little change has made a huge difference.
As a parent, it makes me happy to see that my kids are going to a school where the campus really prioritizes emotional, social, emotional wellness, and they do a lot of things with the kids, including breathing exercises, and they get down at their level and really talk to them and try to make those meaningful connections so the kids feel comfortable.
It makes me feel like, like the teachers are more connected to us and they know what they're doing, like, so they don't just assume that we're going to act like this. Like, if they know, like, hey, this is what my student is, at least, like, sure you know how they want to be treated. It feels like we make, it makes me feel more connected, I guess I could say.
Yeah, working as a teacher, especially a research teacher, I have a lot of students with social needs, so they don't know how to socially interact with others. We create the social contract, and with that contract, it sort of gives them a reference to how to interact with each other. And if they step out of line, if they do something wrong, I just point at the graph and they say, oh, okay, I need to do this, I need to do this better. And people keep each other accountable, the students keep each other accountable for that. It's empowering. It empowers us to have students create their own independence, and that's at whatever form it is, either socially, physically, or academically. It really aligns well with the philosophy here at Long Elementary. I do believe in the program. It is one that sets them up for independence and for a well-rounded student, not just somebody who can pass a test, but somebody who can pass life.
I don't know if you have any questions or...
I just wanted to, I don't have questions. I don't, let me see if I have, no, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I mean, I think, you know, to see the video, and it's emotional, right, but to see that, I know some days, I'm sure you all aren't having the best day either, right? So for you to recognize the impact that you all make on a child, whether or not, you may not be feeling it that day, but to greet them with such joy every day, I think that's just amazing to see. And I hope that you all are benefiting from that as well, and that it's impacting you in a positive, in a positive way, because it's about well-being for all, right? So I hope to, I hope that you all are as well, and I totally see many of you out there going beyond the classroom. I know I've cheered with Ms. Roundtree at basketball games at the Boys and Girls Club, and I know that you all, you know, have been in, I've been in the classrooms before, and I see you doing that in the classroom and outside, so just want to applaud you for that, and I just, I'm excited to see this grow at the other campuses as well, so wonderful. Good to see this. Great job.
I want to commend you, and, you know, when you first started, I was like, oh, I'm not sure if I'm getting it, you know, like grasping, and then you really explained, like, we do this, like, it's this, and you made it so digestible that now I understand it. And in fact, I wrote down in my calendar, I want to come see it, so I'm going to call you and come visit. I'm so excited about it.
Especially if it's digestible.
Digestible. Now I'm like hungry, right?
You have me, hello, I'm there.
But, so I do, I commend you and your whole team for going all in. You know, this is, to me, this sounds like one of the, it's, it's like the type of program that kids are going to sense whether you're in or you're out, like, huh, you know? But if you're in, they're all in. And just from the images and the video, and you, with your Dr. Seuss hat, and, you know, that was great, but just that, just that you've noticed such a difference with just that, how I begin and end each class. Love it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Anytime, all of you.
Just a couple of things to add on to my colleagues' comments, excellent comments, and I agree 100%. Just, don't forget to check in on each other, because that's so important, right? I mean, you guys can just, how you pick up on kids and parents when they're acting different, and you just kind of say, hey, you know, can I, can I talk to you for a second? A parent will appreciate that enormously, and then they say, like, my gosh, this is, this is incredible place, that just recognizes something was off, and then you can just pick up somebody's daylight that, and in turn, that passes on to the little ones and everything else. But you also got to take care of each other, too, and make sure you guys check in on each other, and that's important as well, because it's tough, it's tough work you guys do. But, you know, the payoff is huge. Really getting community and getting all parents to understand that the talent is there. Each one of those students possesses the talent to achieve whatever they want. It's just, how do we do that? How do we get those parents to believe that? How do we get those conversations around the dinner table at home or around the, you know, in the house? How do we get those conversations at the right level so the students realize, oh, my gosh? So I do a little trick when I see kids, I don't see kids, but when my patients bring grandkids, or usually it's grandkids, but sometimes, sometimes kids, I ask every kid, you know, every student, every, you know, and, what kind of doctor are you going to be? And they look at me like, like, they never thought for a second that they could be, and I was like, yeah, I think you're going to be a doctor, you know? Little things like that can just, you know, open up the minds, and a lot of it's the message for the parents, too. Be like, wow, I guess, I guess, I guess my little one can do something, you know, some of these, one of these days, you know? And that's what you guys do every day by just caring, connecting, and just believing in your students. So thank you, you guys are incredible, and, you know, can't wait to visit. Doesn't have to be digestible, but I can't wait to visit. So God bless you guys, thank you for being here.
Nice.
I'm just going to reiterate what they said, but thank you for everything that you all do. We took part in a panel discussion earlier this morning, and one of the things we talked about as our role as trustees is having an open heart, and that goes for all of, all of us, right? And I think we saw that in action here with what you all do. And just to expand on what Dr. Pettis said about look out after each other, seeing all of y'all here, this big group, is, it says a lot about not just your report, but the culture of your campus, and I think this might be the biggest representation of teachers and staff that we've had, at least that I can remember. So I want to commend you all for that, too, and I know there's a lot of respect and a lot of love for each other there at that campus, and I want to come back to, so, thank you.
And I'll end with some comments, and then Dr. Neula has something. What a great presentation. Fantastic job, Ms. Hushen, and, you know, highlighting Ms. Roundtree, I mean, I've seen her out in the wild. And what you see is what you get, it's amazing. Her energy's amazing, she loves her kids, she loves her students, and she goes above and beyond. I've seen Carrie Bukin as well out there in the wild, doing some amazing things with her kids as well. And of course, I know all of you do that, and it shows through the video. What I want to point out to the board and to you guys as well, I don't think we've ever had a video where we have a parent testimonial in it. And that's unique, because you're getting a, because we forget sometimes as, and we talk about it all the time as a board, but sometimes at the principal level and at the teacher level, we forget that it's not just the students, right? It's, when it comes to customer service, it's really the parents. And if we're not making the parents happy and the kids happy, we got problems. And so you highlighted that in that video, so thank you for putting that in there. I'd like for you all to stand up really quick. Stand up, please. And then we give you a round of applause, you deserve it. Clearly, you have a fantastic team, and there was another school that had, I think they had one more than you. I'm just playing, I'm just joking. I'm just joking, I'm just joking. Fantastic job, ladies and gentlemen. Good job. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hiding in the back, but I know you're, you're doing amazing things. Great job. Great job. Doctor, yes, Carrie?
Want to get a selfie?
You want a selfie? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, let's do it. Well, Dr. Neula's got some comments, then we'll do it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right? But keep standing, just playing. I'm just joking.
So when, when we received the grant from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, and we went through this process of connecting with Capturing Kids' Hearts, one of the things that it came with was there had to be two days of continuous training. And the only way we could do it was it had to include a Saturday. And so I was a little bit nervous, because it was tough times, and, you know, that you were getting going, and here we came asking you to give us a full Saturday. You had that Friday, you had that Saturday. Friday, I think, was like an innovative day, but the Saturday, and this was every elementary teacher across this entire district that we were asking to come in on a Saturday. So Friday night, I think it was Friday night, I started calling some of our principals, and one of the principals I called was Mrs. Hushen, and I said, hey, you know, how'd it go? Because I wasn't quite sure what I was going to hear in pulling our teachers in. And she said, this is the most amazing training we have ever been to. There were people crying, there was so much connection that was happening, because the way that the program worked, the first day was just about the adults, because it recognized the importance of the staff connecting before you can do what you need to do for kids. And so she talked about just what amazing training it was for the adults that first day. So I said, great. But let me call some other schools. And the same thing kept coming back. I think I spoke to like 10 principals, and all of them spoke about the impact that it had on the adults. And so the next day was a Saturday, so, okay, it was a Friday, we were expecting to come in, and then it was the Saturday, all of our elementary teachers coming in, and I did the same thing, had conversations with principals, and it was that same type of response. You know, this can truly impact our schools, impact our teachers, impact our kids, and the video we saw is just testimony to that, to your commitment to children, which we will forever be grateful for, for all that you do. I do want, even though they're not here, I want to give a shout-out to the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. Because we had for many years been looking at this program, and how do we get it to our kids? And so when we applied to the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, I mean, it's a huge investment for them, $800,000 to give to a school district. And so I have to forever give them a shout-out about having the confidence in our district that we could take this kind of funding and really make it work for our, for our children and our staff. So thank you all for all that you do day in and day out for our kids. We recognize that this is such a critical part. Bobby Joe, thank you for outlining our strategic plan, because everything that you're doing completely aligns to that Goal Two and to that Goal Three. So thank you all for taking things beyond just the classroom. Appreciate you all.
Guys, want to take a picture now? Come on up. Come on, come on.
But not with your camera. We have to get the picture.
Wait, 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 one, two, three, guys, cool. Now with her camera.
He's neat.
Everybody, wait, one, two, and three, guys, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you.
At this point in time, we'll go on to item number five, public audience for non-agenda topics, oh, public comments for agenda topics, number four.
Do we have consent calendar? Do we already?
Yeah, well, item number four, public comments for agenda topics. Do we have any comments?
Mr. President, there are no requests for public comments for agenda topics.
And then item number five, public audience for non-agenda topics?
There are no requests for a public audience for non-agenda topics.
Then on to item number six, approval of consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
I believe that we approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Motion by Dr., I'm sorry, Greg Powers. Oh, you are, Dr. J.D.
Third time.
No, you did third time tonight.
Second. Did you get my second?
Dr. Reineger. All right, do we have, we have a person, a second? Any conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right, motion carries. Item number seven, matters relating to transformation in school support. Item A, Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee Report, Dr. Neula.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, March 7th, we had our Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. One of the things, earlier today, as we were having our conversation with our ambassador programs, one of the things that I think Mr. Heimis pointed out was just how many wonderful things happened within our Transforming Teaching and Learning Committee, and all the great things that are brought forward there. And so two, two topics were addressed during this meeting. The first one was looking at our data and looking where our students are here mid-year. In particular, Dr. Veronica Corton, our Associate Superintendent for Leadership and Innovation, shared with the board our NWA MAP growth data here at the middle of the year. We looked at what that growth has looked like from the beginning of the year to where we are now. So we, we found a lot of what she called "glows," and those are those, those great things that we are seeing in the data that, that really is moving our students forward. And then she also shared some of the "grow" areas, areas that, that we know we need to start looking towards, in addressing. And so as part of that presentation, she spoke to some of the systems that we have aligned to build capacity at the campus level, and also what we are doing to support and refine our PLC structures, and, and how we are preparing our students to address those areas that we still need to address. That data was certainly from the beginning of the year, so we're in this second semester with a concentrated focus on, on helping our children address those areas that, that are still needing support. The second presentation, again, also deserves a shout-out to our Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, because the second presentation done by Dr. Josie Villarreal addressed what we are doing with mental health, in particular with our Hope Squad program. This was another program that the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation awarded to HCISD. This is a peer-to-peer suicide prevention program, and so we were fortunate enough to have some of the Hope Squad members from Harlingen High School, had a couple of students who did an amazing job in sharing what the Hope Squad is, what it looks like on a day-to-day basis at the campuses, really spoke from the lens of a student on how this program is impacting them as individuals, but also the, the students at the campus. Sylvia Gomboa, our Director of Guidance and Counseling, assisted Dr. Villarreal in that presentation, and so she shared what that process looks like as we prepare these students who are the Hope Squad members to provide support to, to their fellow students. She shared that some of that preparation is not only about preparing the Hope Squad students, but also their parents, because they, too, are a support system to our Hope Squad members as, as they move forward. This is a nationally-recognized program, and so we're starting to see the benefits of that work, and so can't wait to see as this program really kicks off and solidifies itself, how it will impact our school district and impact all of our, our students. Dr. Reineger was, chaired that meeting, and so I want to turn it over to her and certainly to any other members. Mr. Heimis also is, is part of the committee that would like, any comments that you would like to share about that presentation? Oh, that's right, that's right. I forgot Dr. Reineger was out that particular day. We were talking about our Hope Squad and our NWA data, and so if you would like to share any additional comments from that meeting.
No, and I'm sorry I missed the, the agenda item right now, but I had my notes, and I didn't bring them with me, but whatever was discussed, I echo it.
There you go.
It sounds like it was just a really powerful meeting. I mean, I'm so sorry I missed it.
It was, it was great hearing the perspective from the kids. You know, just them talking about how it has impacted them personally to be that source of support for other students. That was really, really great to hear.
I'll add some comments just to, for the viewers out there. It was a fantastic presentation with the students talking and expressing heartfelt, really heartfelt, emotional discussion about how they've been able to impact other kids' lives, and be able to be a support system for other students just in case there's a problem. It was a really great presentation. Several, I mean, we had about 25, 30 students here. It was fantastic, so, thank you, Dr. Neula.
Thanks for that summary. All of our secondary campuses have a Hope Squad at their campuses, from middle school all the way to high school.
And a point of clarification, that also comes from Legacy Foundation funding, right?
Correct, yes. We applied for two grants, Capturing Kids' Hearts and Hope Squad.
And the Hope Squad, right. I mean, incredible, so, another shout-out to. So another shout out to Legacy Foundation. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number seven, I'm sorry, number eight, matters relating to business services, the internal audit quarterly report, Ms. Nellie Ledesma.
Lots of questions.
Hi, Ms. Ledesma.
Good evening, Dr. Muniz, board members, Dr. Neula, senior administration, and audience. The Policy Audit Committee and I met earlier today and we heard 12 audit reports. Six audit reports were conducted to assist the External Financial Auditors, CRI, and that was an audit that was presented back in November at the Policy Audit and Board Meeting. The external auditors relied on these reports. They relied on the work that we performed on these reports in their assessment of the district's internal controls in these areas. And those audits were audit of bid files, year-end physical inventories, an audit of state compliance program and tech coding for payroll dispersments and non-payroll dispersments, and an audit of HCISD self-funded insurance, and an audit of PEAM student classification eligibility for special education, LEAP, CAC, CCMR, and at-risk students. And then the following, then we also heard five more reports, and those were all special activity fund audits that are required to be conducted when there's a change in principal or secretary. And so we had changes in secretaries at Harlingen High School South, Stan Preparatory Academy, Vella Middle School, Dishman Elementary, and Lamar Elementary. And then the final report that we heard was the unannounced cash audits. And I'm happy to report that everything was good across the district. We had no findings, and these reports were discussed in detail with the audit committee. And I'm here to answer any questions unless Mr. Powers wants to elaborate on something we discussed.
Once again, I want to compliment you and your staff. Y'all do an incredible job. I mean, it's amazing what is involved in doing these audits. I mean, just listening to you about the medical claims that you verify that are made and paid, and I mean, we've talked about, what, 3,000 employees? It's amazing what you all accomplish in these audits. And what's reassuring is how we always come out with a good report. Occasionally, over the last 10 years I've been around, we've had one or two minor, minor things, but you, it's amazing what you do, and you always keep us on the up and up. And thank you very much for all your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight B, consideration for approval of rejection of bids for Harlingen CIC Security Gate Improvements at Harlingen School of Health Professions, bid number CNS T0323-2, Ramon Mendoza.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Muniz, board members, Dr. Neula, we solicited competitive sealed proposals for security gate improvements at Harlingen School of Health Professions. A recap of those two proposals is provided for you, and based on the dollar amounts of those proposals that were submitted, we are recommended to reject all proposals. We had allocated $90,000 for this particular project, and the lowest bid came in at $258,780. The other bid came in at $420,018. So, yeah, it's, we don't have the budget for that particular purchase. We recommend rejection of those bids.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Greg Powers. Second by Ladeo Heimis.
I just had a question. So where is this at? Where is like the, the, yeah, but where at the school?
It's at the School of Health Professions on the north side. There's three gates, the bus loop entrance, the student and teacher parking, and then the other one by the mini gym and the service yard. They currently have fences right now, but they have to manually roll them and open and close them. We're trying to add the motorized systems. We have to run electrical power all the way out there in three locations, bore under the parking lot, install conduits, camera systems, audio systems, card swipe systems, and all that, specialty systems are tripling and prices triple from what we used to pay. So that's what's really driving the cost.
Any further discussion?
So we're just going to continue, I guess, with this plan until, I guess, we can rebid it a year from now, a year from now, see if it comes down and see if we have the money for it or whatever?
Yeah, the key there is we need to maximize our purchase power with our funds, so yes.
Got it.
Do you all think that we'll, I mean, what was the lowest bid to what?
$258,000.
In our budget?
Ninety.
So, I mean, do you think that that price will ever come down? I mean, how many bidders did you have?
Two, two bids came in.
Two bidders.
Two. From what we're hearing in the industry, the prices have pretty much leveled out. Lumber's come down a little bit, but everything else is just kind of flatlined. And they don't anticipate we're going to go back to the prices we used to have. We may save 15% maybe a year or two from now, but they don't think much lower than that until years from now.
You know, I mean, if these bids are reasonably fair, we better look at, I mean, we need to get those gates in. Maybe we ought to look at allocating more money in the next budget for it because I mean, I was there for the presentation, and it's something that's going to be needed. And if, you know, that's a big gap, so it looks like we need to come up some.
We're going to keep an eye on the safety grants that are coming out from the state and the federal government, and we can tap into some of those funds.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I like that idea better. The other thing we got to keep in mind, be mindful, is this is not the first rejected bid. It seems like there's a recurring theme here. And so I think that we need to prioritize if we're going to dip into fund balance to do some of these things, we're going to have to prioritize which one. It sounds like we have good security right now. It just takes some sweat equity, it just takes some manpower there to do that. So it sounds like we're okay. But I think at some point, if we're going to do that, I think, I think, Greg, you're right, we just have to prioritize and say, okay, which one, and then kind of figure out the right timing. But some of these things might have some free money out there.
Yeah, if you could get a grant, that would be fantastic. Is that something the state might allocate for security purposes in this legislative session or?
A couple of, a couple of bills that have been introduced. One of them, we're looking at maybe $25,000 per campus for security and safety issues for our district. And that, that's about $500,000, $600,000 for our district, so that's not much.
But it's per campus, right?
Yeah, per campus, yes.
And there's a number of safety bills that are out there. I'm pretty sure that the state will set aside some monies for safety. It's still a huge priority. It just depends how much, and as long as they're not saying it specifically for this reason. But I, but I think there will be funding that will come through this legislative session. It's just a matter of seeing in what direction they're wanting to go.
Well, and the good thing with these bids now, we know what we need. You know, we didn't know.
We have an idea about how much.
All right, let's move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving on to item number nine, matters relating to human services, consideration for approval of the recommended revisions of policy update 120 on first reading, Ms. Debbie Scoggins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Neula, senior team, and audience. So earlier today at our Policy and Audit Committee meeting, we reviewed policy update 120, which includes policy revisions to state and federal revenue sources, safety programs, risk management emergency plans, student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaint grievances, and student discipline. We also reviewed a local policy FC, school attendance areas, and we would like to bring that particular item back at our next meeting. So at this time, we're considering four local policies that are recommendations made by TASB, and then tabling that FC local just so that we can have further discussion and a little bit more time to review that particular policy revision on school attendance areas. And so administration would recommend approval to policy 120 on first reading with the exception of policy FC local.
Mr. President, Madam President, Mr. President, I move approval as presented with the one exception.
Sure. All right, we have a motion by Dr. Pettis.
Second.
Second by Dr. Monreal. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
One, one item before we move on. Joseph, if you have a chance, I wish you would talk to the board members who weren't here for your presentation on that one item because it had a lot of merit, all the discussion that went on about.
We have plenty of time right now, sir. Go ahead.
This is something we may want to consider, and our next meeting is in June, so.
The next policy meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so first of all, good evening. So we're looking at policy FC local as it pertains to students that are enrolled in high schools and when a residency changes. Okay, so currently, our policy reads that seniors shall be allowed to complete their high school education at a particular high school if they move out of the attendant zone during the year or if they finish their junior year of that particular school. So if I'm in my, my spring semester, my junior year, I'm at Harlingen High School, and my parents move into the Harlingen High School South zone, currently, as per policy, I'm allowed to complete my senior year there at Harlingen High School. The recommended change is that we allow it for all high school students. So if I'm a sophomore and I'm attending Harlingen High School and my parents move into the Harlingen High School zone, I have an option to remain at Harlingen High School instead of having to move to Harlingen High School South.
Not one year, but the duration.
The duration, correct. And as per our policy, you know, some questions that were raised had to do with, could a student jump back and forth? And currently, it would just be one move that you could make, and that would be it.
Could I ask, and this has probably already come up, and I apologize, I wasn't in attendance, but can I ask sort of why, why now? You know, give us some background, you know, why are we having this discussion? I mean, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I think historically speaking, currently, compared to the past, we have a lot of mobility in the district. And so we have a lot of situations where you have families moving back and forth because they're renting homes in one area and they're looking for a cheaper home in another area, and it has an impact on students. And so many times we get, you know, those parents coming forward saying, I really want my child to remain at their high school. That's where they belong, that's all they know, but we found a house with a cheaper rent in another side of town. And so mainly, it has to do with that high mobility rate that we're, that we're dealing with.
So just dealing with the number of, sort of, the number of people impacted where this issue is impacted. Couple of quick questions. Number one is precedent. Other districts, do other districts do this? Is there precedent here? Is this a pretty common thing done?
You are seeing a move more towards open enrollment at all levels. And so.
This is a step towards that direction anyway?
Not necessarily. It's just, you know, looking at, at the requests that we get. A lot of them have to deal with this at the high school level. We looked at, you know, districts also, I looked, for examples, in North Texas as well to see if there were those particular situations. A lot of times, they have magnet schools, and so for those reasons, they're allowed to go to those particular high schools. They're not specialty schools, but they're magnet schools within comprehensive high schools.
And then last question, the effect, impact on team sports?
Yes. So currently, we have a UIL rule, and it's a 365-day rule. So if I'm a sophomore at Harlingen High School and I decide to stay at Harlingen High School even though my parents moved into the Harlingen High School zone, as per UIL, I've established residency at Harlingen High School, and I can continue playing varsity athletics. Okay? But if I move into another high school and I'm not zoned to that high school.
You have to sit out a year.
I have to sit out for varsity athletics participation.
And that's state statute, that's, that's UIL.
Correct. That's a UIL rule that we, that every, every district has to abide by.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. And we did vote. So on to.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph. Item number 10, matters relating to district operations, facilities and safety committee report, Oscar Tapia.
President Muniz, members of the board, Dr. Neula. Facilities Committee meeting was held on March 7th. We talked about some ester-funded projects, represented status of the roofing projects that are being done under Janak Architects and Megamarphis. Both of those projects have been awarded, and we've signed contracts and noticed to proceed and had the pre-construction conference at the campuses with the staff. So they're just about getting ready to start, get started on those. On the TRE projects, I gave a presentation on the Zavala Kitchen Elementary kitchen renovations. That's been, was demo inside, electric work's being done, new freezer cooler unit with a new foundation, grease traps been replaced, terrazzo's being poured on right now. School of Health Professions automatic gates, we talked about that right now, the proposals we're in, we're going to rank them, recommend something today. Obviously, we recommend it's rejection. We also have security fencing at Conwell Jefferson and Treasure Hills replacing existing six-foot wood privacy fence with installation of eight-foot chaining fence with plastic slats. So that should have been considered for award as well. Early Childhood Academy gave a presentation on the status. All interior work is pretty much done, just minor punch lists. Items they're working on, the exterior on the restrooms, they're working on the exterior veneer, so roofing touch up on the top. And so we're starting to call for building and fire inspections so that we can get a certificate of occupancy and move into the outside classrooms that have the new restrooms. The outdoor learning space, we did get bids that were rejected at the last board meeting. They're substantially higher, so we've made some changes to design. We're advertising bids come in next Thursday, and we're hoping to get that under budget. First Responders Academy, we've, again, just done punch lists. We're working on final inspections, calling for fire and building to look at the building for occupancy. Renovations to the high school was awarded also at the last board meeting. The contractors, we've met with the school, come up with a process on how to do stage, where they're going to park, where they're going to set up, and how they're going to work around the kids. And we got a good plan worked out with the principal. Memorial Middle School track, we had two prices to replace that track from Hellas and Bynum. It should have been on the consent agenda for award to Hellas for $266,000. So we'll get that started as soon as we process the PO. And then I presented a couple of change orders at HVAC improvements and Zavala Elementary Kitchen renovations that I presented at the Facilities Committee meeting. Raymond Mendoza then gave an update on the construction financial report on TRE activities and fund expenditures. And under the school safety design plan presentation, Danny Castillo presented a new technology called digital mapping that's been implemented in our district. This digital mapping is recommended best practice tool for emergency preparedness and response. As part of the mapping process, we've established an exterior door numbering site plan for all instructional facilities to assist the first responders in case of an emergency. In addition, each campus has a, been digitized, identifies the emergency location of the infrastructure, such as AED and surveillance camera locations. And what makes this technology unique is that we'll now be able to share these maps with emergency responders and local 911 centers. And that was the end of that presentation, and then we adjourned. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Reineger. She has any, oh, I'm sorry, to Bobby?
Greg Powers. Greg Powers.
Oh, Greg was there this meeting, that's right.
We talked about the trees, too, you know. No, it was a very productive meeting. So many projects are coming to fruition. Oscar, one of the things I just wanted to ask tonight was, I know we, it looks like a couple of the items we took off the agenda, possible, the track, is that, is there bid issues or? We were thinking about awarding the construction on the tracks for Memorial.
Was it on the consent agenda?
Oh, it was on the consent?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's my mistake. Okay. I do want to comment on the school safety design team plan. I think that y'all are doing a terrific job in this area. This is a real game changer. Coordinating this information with all the different partners that we have on our safety program allows everybody to pinpoint the exact site of an incident, everybody to come together within a quick response time. It's just something I think we really need to get out to the public of what we're doing because so many people are talking to us about concerns, and we're on top of it. I'm really proud of what y'all are doing in this regard. I think, I don't know that anybody else is doing this in South Texas or anybody else, but I really commend you for all this effort, so.
Danny, what zone are we in right here? Is D still?
What number are we?
Find D4.
One other thing, Oscar, on the Early Childhood Academy, Alicia, any chance of a tour sometime?
We absolutely can.
So you might want to set that up. I'm really excited to see that. I think everybody would be. Thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Danny. Mr. President, if I could just maybe ask, see if it's appropriate, but sort of tagging on to the discussion here by Greg about the safety and everything we're doing with Danny and your, you know, you know, your folks over there. I think if there's a cool opportunity to invite the board, even if it's just for first five, 10 minutes of a meeting, let's say you're having a big meeting with, you know, different agencies and that kind of stuff, we don't want, we don't want to certainly get in the way or.
get in the way or, you know, or be a distraction or anything like that. But if, if maybe, you know, there's some cool kind of opportunities like this, whether it's a planning session for this, this new program you presented to us, or, you know, you would know what would be kind of cool for us to kind of see in action, and maybe just to come in for five, 10 minutes and, you know, nothing else to see, but then also to thank everybody for, for their participation. I, I mean, I would, for one, would greatly appreciate that, but again, only if you and the superintendent think it's appropriate. I, I just think it's kind of, it's a cool opportunity to thank all of our different agencies that are involved. And again, I do, I do feel that, you know, this district is, is really doing some cutting-edge, you know, work in this space in terms of keeping our students and community safe. And, you know, I think a lot of other people in the valley and the state are going to take, take notice, and I know you're working with all these kind of agencies, and I, I can't, for one, think of another district that's doing anything like this. So, so again, congrats on the great work. If there's an opportunity that we can come in, say hi, just, you know, see, see y'all in action for a few minutes and then get out, but, but really more than anything, you know, thank everybody, that will be, that will be appreciated, I think.
Just to shout out, Doc, to Danny, because he has monthly meetings with the whole group. And so he brings in all of our agencies, and they continue to collaborate, and how do we, we continue to get better at, especially within the communication amongst them. And so he's, I got to commend Danny for all the work that he has done in this district to get us to where we are today.
Mr. President.
Absolutely.
Just one thing, I want, I'm really excited to hear about the digital mapping, and, and of course, sorry to have missed the, the meeting to, to hear all the, all the details, but I'm, I, I will follow up on it. At some point, it doesn't have to be now, I'm also just interested, so I think that digital mapping is so important and, and, you know, just makes such tremendous sense in order to be able to respond and, you know, provide information quickly, et cetera. So that makes a lot of sense. I know there was a, there, there was also some discussions about making sure that rooms are identified both in the, inside, like from this side, and you can see that we, we have some of that, as well as outside. I'd just be interested in, in, at some point, not right now, getting an update on, on how far along we are in, in that, because certainly, we have literally thousands of rooms that we, we have to do that on.
They're mapped.
Right, right, and, and then numbered so that you, you as the person in the room know what room you're in, so. Anyway, just thank you again for all of the work that you all do.
All right, any other comments, questions? I, I just want to add, Danny, you're doing a fantastic job. Thank, thank you. I mean, I don't, I don't think we even recognize what you're doing. So thank you, thank you, thank you. You're making us feel more comfortable being able to talk to our, our community about what's going on. Thank you again, thank, I can't thank you enough. Thank you. All right, at this point, we're on number 11, complete and submit ballot for Region One Education Service Center Board Elections. According to State Board of Education Regulation, schools trustees must elect the Board of Directors of Regional Education Service Centers. Each school trustee in the region receives one vote per vacancy on the board. Only votes submitted on official ballots will be tabulated. No more than one vote per vacancy should be submitted for ballot, and ballots listing more than one vote per vacancy will be invalidated. So everybody has a ballot in front of you, it does say sample on it, it is, that's the right one, and put your, put your vote on there and pass it to Mr. Mark. Ms. Denise Lefner will take them up. Thank you.
And you can't ask Chat GPT who to vote for?
Chat GPT 4.0 now.
Absolutely, well crafted.
Ruben didn't give up, does he?
Denise, you can vote for whoever.
Ruben doesn't give up.
The original ballots were in. We can, we can, we can do them, Denise.
You want us to redo? Which envelope are they in?
In there individual or in the premises?
It was a sealed envelope in the construction premises, mail. We're going to find your.
Oh, this says private information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
At this point in time, item number 12, we are going to be going to adjournment to close or executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551 dot 071, 51 dot 072, 551 dot 074, and 551 dot 082. The opens meeting act for the following purposes, to discuss employment of teachers and other professional staff. At this point in time, we are now in closed session, it is 7:27 PM.
This time is now 8:52. We're back into open session and we are going to go to a consideration for approval of employment of teachers and other professionals. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, make the move to approve the employment of teachers and other professionals as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion by Eladio Jaimez. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Gina Monreal. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.